Call the meeting to order, Caribou Planning Board, March 4, 2015. First item of business, approval of minutes of the February 4 regular meeting. I have a motion to accept.
We have two. No, never mind.
Yep. Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Next item, site design review for Facilities Inc., 7 Russ Street. And we'll open a public hearing at this time to discuss this proposal. Is there anybody from the audience who is interested in addressing the 7 Russ Street desire to add an apartment to their building?
Sure. My name is Eric Bactel, and I live at 24 Russ Street. I got a notice there about this hearing because I live within 500 feet of 7 Russ Street. I guess I have some concerns. I've been here before. It's been a few years. AMHC had made a proposal several times over to have a residential facility at this location. I guess I was a little curious why this is going before the board to begin with, since it's a commercial zone at the end of Russ Street. And if it's a single-family dwelling adding on, I guess, you know, looking at the land use tables, I was wondering about that. I guess that was my first question. And I'm kind of curious about what Facilities Inc. is and what type of residential facility this is going to entail. I don't know.
The first part of that question, residential dwelling is allowed in a C2 zone with planning board approval. So Facilities Inc. has filled out the site design application, and that comes before the planning board for their review, public hearing, public comment. And if the planning board were to approve it, it would be allowed based upon approval.
Okay. And is this facility going to be just one apartment, or is it a multiple apartment?
One apartment.
Okay.
So be, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it'd be an apartment on the west side of the building and office space on the east side of the building.
You mentioned that Aristic Mental Health previously had wanted to put in some apartments, and I don't know if the tenant that they would have had would have been a special needs person or anything as opposed to what Facilities Inc. is envisioning. Has there been any discussion, is this for general public occupancy?
Facilities Inc. is a nonprofit, so as far as commercial rentals, we can only rent to another nonprofit. The residential rentals we have are either Section 8, or they are falling under what we call the Vickers Hope program that helps people with mental disabilities integrate back into the community. We have a string of houses on Vickers Drive that are for that purpose. On Russ Street, we would probably use it for Section 8. That would be the best use for it. I don't know if that answers the gentleman's question or not, but...
So it sounds like Facilities Inc., and I guess I'm being educated simultaneously, sounds like Facilities Inc. is either an offshoot of Aristic Mental Health?
Yes, it is. We've grown apart over the years. We were formed back in the late 80s. We're two separate corporations at this time.
But you're probably a child of Aristic Mental Health?
Yes.
Okay. Go back to the other gentleman.
I guess first regarding the zoning, under C2 for a single-family dwelling, it lists no under your table. If it's a multiple, two-family housing, or multiple-family, or three-story apartments, it's by planning board approval.
Right. Single-family dwelling with the staff interpretation, if the planning board wants to interpret it differently, single-family dwelling would be like a home, a one-house. Where this is commercial and residential, it doesn't quite fit into the single family.
Okay. Well, you know, like I mentioned before, AMHC brought this before the planning board. I'm not sure if any of you gentlemen were here before, but it was turned down several times, and then the integrated neuro rehab facility came into that location for several years. You know, maybe you can, you know, explain a little bit more about Facilities Inc. I was just looking at Facilities Inc. and the mission statement, and it talks about, you know, that it provides people with low income and behavioral impairment, you know, safe and affordable residential housing and work sites. You know, and I was trying to find out what behavioral impairment was. And, you know, I was looking, and I, maybe someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, according to DHHS, you know, behavioral impairment, well, I found the criteria that they use to determine what behavioral impairment is. Some of the criteria they use is wandering, you know, moving around with no rational purpose, seemingly oblivious to needs of safety, verbal abuse, others were threatened, screamed at, cursed at, physical abuse, others were hitched, scratched, sexually abused, socially inappropriate behavior, made disruptive sounds, noisy, screaming, self-abusive acts, sexual behavior, or disrobing in public, smearing, throwing food feces, hoarding, rummaging through other people's belongings, and resisting care, resisting taking medications, injections, eating, that sort of thing. And based upon those criteria, you know, depending on how well someone rates, that what they determine if they qualify for being considered behaviorally impaired. And I guess, you know, being a father of three young children in a residential neighborhood, I have concerns about, you know, my wife and my children walking in the neighborhood, you know, if it's going to be housing, those types of people. And I mean, I'm not sure what you gentlemen think, but I mean, I guess I would think twice about moving into an area where one of these facilities would be located. You know, and I've been resident of Caribou and that same location for 12 years, you know, and it certainly wasn't there when I moved in. And I mean, if this proposal were to be approved, it would not only put my family at risk and my neighbors potentially, but it also, you know, impact the value of my residence. You know, I mean, I really don't know a whole lot about, you know, as far as what was sent to me, as far as a letter, but from what I found and based upon past experience there, I guess I'm more than a little concerned.
Does any, do any members of this board have questions for this gentleman?
No, not for that gentleman, but I have questions for Mr. Blythe. Is appropriate at this time?
Go ahead.
I'm confused, Austin, about what's allowed and what's not. In paragraph 1, in your memo to us, you say that a single-family dwelling is not allowed. I understand your interpretation of that to mean a standalone house.
Right.
About two-family, multifamily, or a third story is allowed. Now, we get down into Section A, Conformance with the Comprehensive Plan, which was just approved by us and by city council. I found a contradiction there. Because it says, "In order to protect the integrity of the commercial zone, residential dwelling units," without defining what they are, "are not allowed on the first floor, street level of buildings in the commercial zone. Accessory and incidental residential units may be developed on floors other than the first floor." So I'm not sure we are on solid ground approving this.
Certainly understand that, and you might have some good concerns. This is one of those tough situations where the comprehensive plan has been updated, and we're working through the Chapter 13 zoning ordinance rewrite. So this is one of those types of issues that would be addressed as we get further into the rewriting of Chapter 13. The timing of this application with the zoning ordinance the way it is and the comprehensive plan the way it is provides for this sticky situation.
Okay. But nevertheless, the paragraph from the comprehensive plan seems to point in the direction the planning board and city council wished to go.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I know, what, two months ago, Mr. Oslin, and I had talked, or I had emailed Tony in regards to this because Ryan had asked me about it, and Tony had, I don't know, do you have that email?
I do have a copy of it, Tom.
Okay. Tony seemed to think that it wouldn't be a problem. I mean, there were some things that had to be done in that apartment that would make it, that would have to make it work. Outside storage locker type thing had to be added, and I can't remember exactly everything else, but...
Is, because the C2 description that we have now would permit it if it's accessory or incidental, and they went through the site design review process?
And approved by us.
But then it talks about whether 50% of the area is devoted to commercial space or something, so there's some kind of requirement like that.
Right. So that each, and I'm not entirely positive where this comes from, but the apartment's accessory to commercial use, each dwelling shall be provided a private space of 500 square feet minimum per dwelling unit adjacent to each unit, off-street parking, subsurface wastewater, and then all the provisions of the building codes and everything, life safety and all that would have to be met as well. As for the accessory use, so I'm looking up the land use table here.
I don't know if that's defined in there anywhere.
I don't...
What's the size of the whole building, Brian?
The whole building is about 5200 square feet.
Okay.
And the other, the other thing too is there's, I mean, their offices on one end of that building. So I mean, it's not like the whole building's going to be rented out. It's, his office is there. It's not like the tenants would be troubled tenants, I wouldn't imagine, but it's...
It would be converted to a three-bedroom unit, so it would be a family going in there. You know, we're not going to rent it out to a single individual. Probably be, you know, man and wife, or a couple, whatever you want to call it, and a couple of kids is what we envision to have there.
The definition of, and I forget if it was behaviorally challenged or whatever, are some of what he found for the definition possible for the tenants?
It is possible, yes. We would not discriminate against anybody that had a mental illness to go in there. We deal with those people already, both in Caribou, Holton, and in Prescott Isle as part of our clientele. We also have just regular families that, you know, they may be receiving mental health services, but it could be someone that's just suffering from depression, or, you know, we don't always know what their issue is. We're the landlord, AMHC takes care of the client. We try to distance ourselves from the, from the client themselves. We just provide a landlord service for them, so...
Is the reason why you're looking to add this apartment to make better use of your existing real estate?
That's correct. There's about 1,600 square feet of the building that we don't need for ourselves. Like I mentioned before, we are a nonprofit property management company, therefore we can only rent to a nonprofit commercial entity. And I've tried for the last few months to find a commercial tenant for that property, and I just can't find anybody that can use it. You know, AMHC did rent the building one time. They moved to another building in town that better suited them. So we were left with an empty building, so we've moved our office there, and we're hoping to rent the other side commercially, but it's just not viable. There is no nonprofits that I can find in Caribou that are interested in it.
If we were to take action on site redesign review based on a concern that the occupants might have some kind of disability, take action one way or the other, I think we'd get in a lot of trouble. And we've got a nuisance property ordinance, and we've got a police department, and we've got all kinds of different standards that might control somebody's conduct once they get in there. I think we've got to limit it to, you know, is this an accessory use? Does it meet that definition? But if we get into who might live there or might not live in there, we're in a whole lot of trouble.
I agree.
Yep.
I'm glad you brought that out. I'm puzzled by, you say that because you are a nonprofit, you have to rent to a nonprofit?
That is correct.
Is that...
That's IRS...
Is that law, or is that just a, is that a bylaw of your incorporation document?
Well, it's both, actually. It's part of our bylaws, and our tax exempt status and the IRS is contingent on that. We can't rent to a for-profit corporation because we're a charitable and benevolent organization, so...
Yeah, I've never heard that before, but...
There's not too many nonprofit property management companies around, and it's a very delicate thing to, not only to obtain, but to keep. And we wouldn't try to push the boundaries in any way in regards to the IRS, so...
Okay. I share some of the same concerns that Bob mentioned with regards to the zoning aspect of it, because if we approve this based on the way it's written now, but yet we have already established the direction we want to go with regards to zoning and residential properties and how they're going to fall within C1, C2s, we're just, I think, setting ourselves up for more possible people coming in and trying to do this kind of thing when we're trying to, I guess, revitalize our commercial area and try to keep them commercial. You know, if it was, for me, if it was a business, and then the residential part of that business was going to be inhabited by the owner of the business, it would seem more feasible to have it in a C2. But if it's going to be an office and then another apartment building in a C2 zone, I don't think it falls underneath our descriptions thereof for what we have and/or what we're looking to go forwards to.
Is the situation that it's currently permissible under what we've got, but it may not be in the future?
Correct. Based upon the comprehensive plan that the board's worked on, it looks like the direction they want to go is to not allow it on the first floor. But under the current zoning ordinance, it would be permissible with, you know, at the planning board discretion of their approval. So it's not something that we would, that the board would have to approve, but it's something that would be allowable.
Given the relative inexperience of this board, I'm wondering if this is something, I mean, you used the word sticky situation a while ago. I'm wondering if this is something that we could postpone pending advice from the main municipal association? If this should be brought to the main municipal or the city attorney? But, I mean, all of us who are on this board have been here for, you know, a couple of years, and don't have a whole lot of depth behind us, and I'm almost thinking this is something we might want to lean on some experts to guide us.
But if we postpone that, that's going to delay your timetable for when you wanted to do it as well, correct?
Well...
Yes, it would, but, you know, we...
I was going to say, if we're talking the first of next month, we'd be delaying it a month.
Right.
What are we going to learn from our attorney or main municipal that we don't already know?
Well, that's like, what am I going to learn?
I mean, what do you think they bring to the party? We have a law, and we have an intent to change the law, but right now, we're stuck with the law as it's written.
And my question, follow-up on yours, was going to be, what questions do you have for MMA or that you think you need legal guidance on?
Okay. Well, I guess I'm...
I agree with Phil that we are in danger of opening a floodgate here unless we act really fast on the zoning rules, or unless we institute a moratorium. But to be fair, I can't, I don't think we can institute a moratorium that would include this application, because that would be after the fact.
Is this right on the fringe of the residential-commercial line, or is it this well within it? I'm trying to get up...
I believe it's right, I believe right across the street is residential. I'd have to pull up my map here, if you give me a moment.
Well, isn't there a body shop?
Right, Anderson.
Next door.
G&amp;J is right across the street. Or it's across the road.
There's two of them.
The place would be right here, so there's commercial that goes further down. Right to the west, immediately to the west, it is an R1 zone.
Okay.
But right across the street and Russ Street, it is still commercial.
There is an apartment house right across the road from the driveway that would be used for our apartment if this gets approved, so...
And the other part, I mean, maybe I'm beating a dead horse with regards to referring back to what's listed already, but in that first paragraph, it says, "In a C2 zone, a single-family dwelling is not allowed, but a two-family, multifamily with planning board approval." So this still would not fall, in my opinion, wouldn't fall under that ability to have in C2, because it's a single-family dwelling, not a multiple and/or...
I thought of that also in that, because I know that this isn't technically a private residence, but it is going to be a single-family occupying the residential portion of this building. And I was thinking to myself that the applicant would have a better chance if they converted the building into two apartments than into one apartment. Does anybody else have any comments or questions before we close the public hearing and act on this?
Is the prohibition on the single-family dwelling, is that something that exists now, or is that something that's going to exist in the future?
The prohibition on single-family housing in a C2 zone exists today.
Today, okay.
I think somebody wants to speak?
Yeah, I've got a couple more questions and comments there. You mentioned something about Vickers House. Is that, you said something similar to, or...
We, right now, we have a, we have the old base housing on the access highway. And that's operating under a Vickers Hope program, and that's strictly for people with mental illness. Nobody else can move in there. It's part of the terms of the words we got from the federal government when we obtained the property. We do operate apartments in...
Pass that down, because that's...
...that family, but regular people, I guess.
771.
That's what I want to have at Russ Street. I'm not trying to disrupt the...
I don't see a single-family prohibition there.
How many facilities do you operate in Caribou?
C2-1?
Caribou.
Being C2 on page 771.
I don't see anything about single-family units.
And Vickers Drive, is that, that's right up here?
Yeah, well, it says residential dwelling units are not allowed on the first floor.
Then if you go another sentence, it says they are. It's weird.
And down here, you're...
This is, "May be developed on floors other than the first floor." Accessory and incidental.
"May be developed on the first floor only if 50% of greater floor space is maintained for commercial use..."
Based upon the intent of the...
"...with site design and planning board approval."
Right. So he just, he cut bits and pieces out of it, but it's still a combination of the whole, and if we're going to try to achieve C2 with no residential and keep that intact...
That's the email from Tony to Todd.
That's Section 13-700, if anybody has their ordinance book with them, and would like to look that up.
I'm reading 13-200, -203.
Sorry, the, what, the email that apparently Tony provided, that information, the apartment's accessory to commercial use, that's where that information's from, if anybody else wanted to look that up. So even there, you know, in the opening section, the planning board, as I interpret this, the planning board would still need to approve it based upon a site design review.
I think our, whether or not our approval is necessary isn't the issue. It's whether or not we are in contradiction of our own ordinances if we do approve it.
I don't see that we are...
It would depend upon if the planning board would determine that this is a single-family dwelling and not a multifamily usage, then this clearly would not be allowed in this zone. If the planning board were to determine that it's an apartment accessory to commercial use, it could still be allowable under Section 700, the general requirements for land use.
Where is the prohibition on the single-family unit? Is that in 700, 13-700?
In the land use table, which would be 300... It should be like a folded-out Excel spreadsheet type thing in your packets there, I believe.
Okay, the table is in 204.
So dwelling, single-family is number 36 on that list.
Yeah, set is a no.
Well, it's all going to come down to how we read dwelling.
And I think the planning board can make some good points and good arguments as to this could be considered a single-family dwelling as well.
Well, according to this, if we interpret it as a single-family, the answer is a clear no.
Correct.
Pass that back down, Bob.
Yes. I don't think that goes to Todd or Austin. I'm not sure.
Go ahead.
Which was my first inclination, wondering why this was going before the board again. AMHC, you know, I think three times went before, well, the planning board. It was shot down two times, and then the third time, they had Mr. Bennett come, and it was tentatively approved by the planning board, and I don't know what exactly happened, but the neuro rehab facility went in there instead of a facility. But regarding the site design review, I guess I had questions as far as, under Section U, and how that relates to this proposal. It doesn't seem like there's much on there other than, didn't think it'd be a problem. But I mean, I guess I certainly have concerns, my family has concerns. I think if my neighbors knew what, you know, the mission statement and Facilities Inc. is, and a lot of their clientele, which I think is telling by, you know, your interest in the... the nuisance ordinance, and, you know, how, and how you were concerned that, you know, that landlords would be penalized for tenants' behavior. I mean, I think that-
Well, there's two things that would have to happen for this to go through. First would be a planning board approval of the whole idea, and the second would be the site design review. Those are two separate issues.
And we can't proceed to the site design review if it doesn't meet approval.
Exactly.
Shall we close the public hearing and deliberate amongst ourselves?
I guess we will.
Any last comments? Public hearing is closed on this matter. I guess I'd be curious to know if, first, should we have a motion? Is there a motion to approve or disapprove?
I won't be voting on this. I have a conflict. Sit on the board's, uh, Facilities Inc. so.
You sit on the board of Facilities Inc., oh. Okay.
I won't be voting.
You, you will, you will not be voting?
I will not be voting.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five, okay.
Do we have, within the code, specific definitions of single-family and multi? Like, like if I have an apartment and I have a couple of families living in it, or is there, how do you, besides the obvious, how do you determine what's single-family and multifamily?
Let's look up the definitions here. I'm looking for the, I don't see a definition for single-family.
Okay.
It talks about the residential structures of a single-family.
Yeah.
I don't see any one clear definition of a single-family. I don't know if there's any, if Mr. McDonough might know.
What's that?
The definition of, we're missing. You have a lot of history, so.
I was still wondering about that, Phil.
Single-family.
If you're going to be on the, on the technical side of it, you know, consider a family unit, right? Dwelling, people, anybody who lives in a dwelling, dwelling can be a house, it can be an apartment, it can be a hen, you know? And I know issues of the same nature in the past have been disproved as this gentleman has brought up, and I think that, if I'm not wrong, Mr. Gardner's property was turned down off the street. Just to top for examples. I think when the Corvins were building their place down there, they specifically built on the second floor to avoid that.
Right.
So, I'm just saying, you know, maybe put some clearer definitions in the new ordinance when you go there, so it more defines, you know, what we, what we interpret a family unit as, what we interpret a dwelling, or an apartment, or a house, or-
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's another definition we're going to wrestle with at some point, too, called congregate housing.
Congregate?
Mm-hmm.
Because if you rent this place out to an unmarried couple, each with an independent child, who would be so-called step-siblings, now all of a sudden, you're talking a multifamily or, I don't know, that's totally clear, one way or the other.
You're almost into congregate housing. We don't-
That's not allowed either, right?
Nope. That doesn't even allow for PB approval.
Right. And I'm not aware of any other instance in Caribous, in the downtown, or in the commercial C2 districts, where we do allow, or where somebody does occupy a first-floor dwelling. I'm not aware of any other circumstance like that.
Well, given that it's a, it's a may happen with our approval, and given that our desires moving forward are pretty clear, I guess I'll be the beggar, and I'll move that we don't approve.
I'll second that.
Moving seconded, not to approve. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion not to approve? Motion not to approve is carried, meaning the project does not go forward.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Next item on the agenda, mobile home ordinance.
The mobile home ordinance is on the following pages. Want to thank the members of the planning board once again that were on that, and the members of the community that were on that. The ordinance repeals the current ordinance that has a number of requirements, including mental requirements, road design, utility requirements, lighting, solar waste removal, and more. For the most part, this ordinance requires construction to be done according to the state's standards. It requires a list of mobile homes presented to the assessor by April fifteenth of each year. That'll be helpful in the assessing process, to help the city keep track. Last month, the board did have a question on the metal roofing issue. We discussed that. I talked with the, the state agency. They're certainly okay with the metal roofs that we have today that are common on, on homes. This definition was more to not allow metal that would typically be seen on barns or silos, that type of-
Recurragated stuff. I, I thought that's the way it would go.
So they're certainly okay, and, and metal roofs would meet the state definition, which we're using here, so. Public hearing's been advertised, needs to be held tonight, after that, the planning board may take action.
Time to open the hearing, sir.
Let's open a public hearing on the proposed ordinance, manufactured housing ordinance. Is there anybody present who wishes to address this proposed ordinance? Seeing no one, public hearing is closed. Discussion on this? I had a question myself on, on page eighteen, number two B, shall be placed on a permanent foundation, just from my own knowledge, is a slab considered a permanent foundation?
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Under words, just don't let it sit in the mud.
Above that, under item H, I didn't know if those, just a, no manufactured housing may be occupied until a certificate of occupancy has been issued by the code enforcement officer at his or her discretion, the building inspector.
There's a grammar problem there, yeah.
Exactly. I don't know if we're just missing a comma after the word discretion, or if we need to insert or by the building inspector. But there's, the sentence doesn't read well.
I think a comma.
At his or her discretion, comma.
Yeah, that would be the discretion of the CEO.
Right.
Allowing the building inspector to issue the-
Or at his or her discretion, the building inspector.
Yeah, so that would be a comma, that makes, makes it sense.
Just add a comma there.
Yep.
Yeah.
One of the other things is, several times in this ordinance, is referenced to the Maine Uniform Building and Energy Code, otherwise known as MUBEC. And I didn't know if, I, I think there has been some discussion in the state of Maine about repealing MUBEC, because it, it applies to the city of Caribou, but it doesn't apply to the town of Woodland. And so, depending which side of the line you live, you've got a whole different set of hoops to jump through. And I didn't know if we use the word MUBEC, or Maine Uniform Building and Energy Code, in all of our ordinances, and then it gets repealed, then we have an issue of going back. And I'm wondering if we should instead be using something like the applicable building Which provides greater flexibility.
You've got to, if you want to, if you want to incorporate a code into the ordinance by reference, you've got to be specific with it.
You have to.
Specifically cite it, because it's what puts you on notice, that if I want to comply, I know which book to go look for.
Okay.
So it'll have to be updated from time to time.
Yeah, and if, if MUBEC goes away, then somebody's got to have a short meeting to revise the ordinance.
Okay.
And I don't think MUBEC will be going away.
Really?
No, not likely.
I don't think it needs to go away. It just needs to-
Needs to be uniform.
Needs to be, slide everywhere, yeah.
Top to bottom, left to right.
Exactly right. Should be, why have a uniform building code if you're not going to, it's not going to apply throughout?
Kind of defeats the word "uniform."
Correct.
We beat that horse.
Okay, we have a motion.
Make a motion to re-accept the mobile home.
Second. Moving seconded that we accept the mobile home, manufactured housing ordinance. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie's unanimous. Chapter thirteen, rewrite.
As we continue our process through this one, section two is a bit more complex than last time. There's a few, few proposed changes in the language. I'm guessing the board has looked through this and might have a few more as well, so.
I have a question to raise. Should that motion we just approved say something about sending it on to the city council?
I, I thought that what motion was recommended to the council.
Or, okay, we, we approved it, but there was no reference, but it's inherent?
That's how I understood the motion.
Okay, implicit, inherent. Okay, sorry, excuse me. Okay.
So I don't know how the board would like to walk through this one.
I guess I would ask if people had questions. I, we have a few editorial comments. On page twenty-four, G and H, I-1 industrial district and I-2 industrial district, I, I fail to see any significant differences, and question why we have a one and a two.
By page twenty-four, you're referring to this document?
Page twenty-
As opposed to this document?
No, yeah, twice twenty-four, the, that was sent with the agenda. Because I'm looking at, you know, when I read I-1 and I read I-2, I thought, gee, you know, there's a few words difference, but it's very similar.
And the establishments of the districts, the zoning districts, is a conversation that I, I didn't touch on in here, I wanted to have this with the, the planning board, because I was not involved with the comprehensive plan, and the thoughts as to how to move forward with, you know, decreasing the number of zones, or combining them. So I, I was going to turn to the planning board for a little bit of guidance as to how they wanted to handle the different districts.
I think one of the things we had discussed was looking at zoning before we went through and did the rewrite of this particular section, to see, you know, what zones are going to be where, within the map as well, if I remember correctly. I think that was a topic of discussion.
Yeah, and I know that some of us had, I mean, remember Jimmy Bacon coming in, and he was wishing that we looked at zoning around his area, and that we never, we never did anything with-
No, because we said we would address it when we got to this point.
When we finished comprehensive plan.
Or when we didn't map.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I don't think we should be addressing the detailed wording of the definitions until after we figure out what we want where.
Right. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No, I think you need to decide definitions before you can figure out.
Before you establish a tribe.
Define how, define what we want, and then define where we're going to put it, basically.
Well, it could be a-
And it's going to be a work in progress with, I mean, you go through it simultaneously. That's my thought. But I, like I said, I don't know what-
So, keeping with the discussion, either way, we're going to have to have a discussion. Is there a reason why we have an I-1 and an I-2, and not just one single industrials district, period? I, yes?
I think some of that mindset at the time, when little zones were all set up, was different capacities as far as industrial application.
Size.
Some might be the light industrial, and some might be heavier.
Yeah.
So if you want naturally something that's going to be noisier than the dickens, probably further away from your residential elements or anything like that, where it would cause a disturbance, and then the light industrial stuff could be closer. I, I too agree that industrial's industrial, you know?
The same on, same way almost with C1 and C2, the verbiage is almost the same throughout.
But I think that would, I think that would-
Except for that phrase, it just gave us trouble.
Right.
Well, so do we want to keep two different industrial districts?
Because it falls under C1, too. That's the same verbiage.
You know, when you're saying it's, and if it's to designate size, which was intended to be the larger, I-2 or I-1? Because I-2 makes reference to requiring extensive land area.
See, I would think two would be your bigger, bigger-
Would be the larger?
Yeah.
So if we had a McCain's, or, or something like that, that would be an I-2?
Your one Steels, or your-
Whereas stainless food equipment would be an I-1?
Yeah.
And I, and I think based on the comprehensive plan, you could probably, with our vision, the last time that I recall, probably shrink some of those quite a bit.
Yep. So, so that means if we have an I-1 and an I-2, when we look at the map, we have to decide which specific spots are I-1, and which ones are I-2?
Correct.
Right now, I mean, the old bird's eye sight is I-2, which would, as I read it, be a little bit of a heavier industrial.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if we would want heavy industrial, you know, people think smokestacks, when you think heavy industrial. And that's certainly not what the bird's eye was, but are you going to allow smokestacks that close to a residential zone?
See, you got, you got industrial here going right adjacent to a hospital zone.
That's, I think that's just an old artifact of, that's where the railroad was.
Right. But, that's, that's over here, close to here, really. And I don't think that they were really looking at much industry there versus just maybe some rail activity, historically speaking. Then you got all this out here that's-
I mean, well, again, you're following the railroad. Is our goal to loosen up some land here, so that we can encourage development?
Yeah.
I believe, I believe so. Yeah, I mean, that's what I hope, anyway.
Well, and that's, I mean, I'm not sure if Tony, and tell me if, this is your understanding also, Tony Mazuko told me the purpose of zoning is to control growth. Okay, and-
It doesn't necessarily mean limit, it just means control, is the difference.
Right.
Well-
To grow smartly. I mean, to, to make sure you're growing in a-
Right. But when I'm looking at that map, and I'm asking myself, okay, you know, what guidelines are we going to use to determine what's an I-1 versus an I-2? Or maybe, maybe others of you have a clear vision that I don't. I mean, I tend to lump them both together, but if the majority of you want to keep two separate, then let's keep two separate.
And what we can do is, we can take a look at the zoning definitions from other communities as well, and bring those back as, for the council, or, sorry, for the planning board to review.
Yep. I do think we need to identify the definitions before we attack the map. Because we need to know what, what is meant by each.
I agree.
That way, we can better lay out the map based on what, what our, our goals are, or the visions thereof.
Stay corrected.
I, well, do we want to discuss I-1 and I-2, or do we want to just leave it as is?
I think it certainly makes- I think it certainly makes sense to have better definitions of I-1 or I-2 and-
Just keep it as it is then?
For the moment.
Okay. Okay, my next item.
Do we want to look at C-1 and C-2 as well?
Since we just had a big, long discussion about C-1 and C-2.
There's not a whole lot of difference between the two. And that would probably help eliminate some confusion as well. Try to keep everything on an even keel. Anything that you know is going to be deemed commercial.
The biggest issue that I would have if we were to get rid of C-1 and C-2 is the setback requirements.
Okay.
C-1 is more of your downtown where your buildings are sharing a common wall or you have a foot or two between them.
C-2-
Whereas C-2 is a little bit more-
Needs all street parking and stuff like that. But we should probably make sure we address-
The residential aspect of it.
Aspect, make it more clear, one way or the other. In both of those discussions.
Right, because both of them carry about the same language when it comes to the residential aspect of it.
Right.
Some would say, well, we want to maintain the ability for the planning board to approve something if it proves desirable. But others would say, no, just knock it out and let ZBA worry about it.
The discussion we had, excuse me, the discussion that we did have also was multiple use of 2. For, I mean, for instance, like, we got RC-2, this residential structure, you know, you might want to broaden the definition. But in some areas, as long as the uses are compatible in that.
Well, and, you know-
That, that gives you a little bit more flexibility as to what you do in a certain area, too.
I mean, that's really what we have. We've got these different zones that are loaded up with non-conforming uses. It would be a shame if we come up with these definitions and then we have to say no when somebody makes a presentation where we'd love to say yes.
Right.
Some kind of, some kind, some way to quickly say this is crazy, not to grant an exception and grant an exception.
So how do you-
But you grant one exception, then you're going to start-
Well, but-
Having a line of exceptions that people are going to be wanting.
I guess following-
Business?
Well, I'm not about turning away business, but I mean-
I mean, I think that Matt and Todd are talking the same thing, which is my objective, too, which is to encourage development in this community and to loosen it within reason. I mean, we just decided no on, on something a few minutes ago, but I don't know if there is a way to, what was the phrase you used, multi?
Yeah, multi-use.
Multi-use. Because when I look at the I-2, which is overlaid on the airport, I mean, twenty years ago, I, I asked the city, I asked the code enforcement officer if we could do an airport community. And he never heard of such, which, you know, an airport community is where you have residential streets and the street is literally a taxiway to the runway. So you park your airplane at your house. And, you know, and, and the, the taxiway is also the street. It serves both cars and airplanes. And, you know, I thought, because of, I mean, they have them all over the south.
That's where it doesn't snow.
Well, there's a lot more flying that goes on in the south.
Doesn't snow.
So when I look at that I-2 zone around the airport, I think to myself, well, gee, you know, if somebody wanted to build a street and start trying to put up some houses with a hanger attached, the I, the industrial zoning kills that because, you know, but then if there's a way to make it multi from the point of view of, okay, first come, first served. If somebody wants to put up a street, well, we'll make the zoning residential. If, if somebody wants to put up a potato plant, well, then I guess it's going to be industrial and the other isn't going to happen. You know what I'm saying? We need to remain flexible. And so I don't know if there's any way to do that.
Well, in other towns, well, one of the town where I served, people who wanted to work with a particular piece of property that was owned a certain way would come in with a proposal for town meeting to change the zoning.
To change the zoning, okay.
And that would either get approved or not approved by town meeting. In this case, it would be city council with planning board advice.
Yep.
You're talking like spot zoning?
Well, not so much spot zoning. It has, we were pretty diligent about not allowing that. But it had to be a, a big enough project so that, you know, a major zoning change was going to be useful.
Okay, such as what we're discussing at the airport, you know, transit, although I don't think it's going to happen.
But the mechanism, the mechanism for that, again, you know, was, was, was a legal process or a lawmaking process.
Is it a project similar to what you're talking about that's been on the books now for, I don't know, five or six years or so down in Portland? They just approved it, same thing. Down in Back Bay, they want to do apartments, but they want to do multi-use, they want to do retail, things of that nature in there, too. But initially, it was all residential and I think that that's what they were geared to. But they finally approved it so that they can stand on their plans, so to speak.
You know, following this whole thing about, you know, varied usage, when I was looking at the H-1, the health-related district, the hospital zone, whatever you want to call it, aren't we expecting an application for an independent living facility? We're not?
Not at that location.
Oh, okay, because I-
We were, but that's changed.
Okay, because I was going to say, because that would have been, I, I don't think an independent living facility would have satisfied the health-related zoning. Because independent living is independent, meaning you don't need any help. As opposed to assisted living, which has a healthcare component, you know, inherent to it.
And another thing that I want to bring up that we shouldn't lose sight of is even though these are the definitions, we also have the land use table that everybody was just looking at in 204 that says what is and is not allowed in these districts. So the definitions are kind of general speak where the land use table says this is allowed, this is not allowed, this is a level of planning board approval, or code enforcement officer can approve it. So they go hand in hand.
The last time the land use table was overhauled was between 2005 and 2007. To the degree where it was changed majorly, where they went in and they did, you know, all the blocks. Yes, no, CE, you know, planning board and stuff like that. That hadn't been done for eons prior to that. And a lot of times what happens is, is that, Austin hit that, but then you go in and you change one thing, change another thing, change another thing, and then it gets all spread out and you start to lose the intended meanings in your vote spectrum because you keep changing the little things to accommodate this, that, and the other thing when you have an area for it already. And I think that's part of the definition of the comprehensive plan. If you define the comprehensive plan, that this is where you want that particular growth then you should try and stick to it. So you're not hodging all over the community. As Matt correct-
Yeah, you've got to be careful about not creating too many non-conforming uses.
I'm sorry, bud.
I was just saying, you have to be careful about creating non-conforming uses. But on the other hand, you want to maintain the ability to be creative.
There's some language on, it'd be on page thirty-eight of the handout under the subsection where they talk about when you're changing from one non-conforming use to the other. And that implicates that in actual Board of Appeals, but it talks about, I assume, a case-by-case consideration of like, non-conforming or conforming, whatever. How consistent in general is it with, I think, you know, say the neighborhood? They don't use the word neighborhood, but, you know, will, will it, will it actually have an adverse impact? Or will it probably be, you know, not a big deal? If there was that sort of, I mean, you don't want to have to go to the Board of Appeals every time, but if you, if you had something along the lines of that analysis so that you could have flexibility for, if you got, you know, because you're right on the line a lot of the times and, you know, you've got residential here and commercial here. And you'd hate to say no just because something's a little bit on one side, but, you know, wouldn't adversely impact anything and, or a little bit on the other. You'd end up dealing with everything on a case-by-case basis that way. But we don't have that many cases come through here. And those tables where it just says yes, no, CB, that's really punitive. You know, if you just know it's no and I've got to change the law to get around it, when the use might be completely consistent with your neighbor's non-conforming use and this neighbor is non, and that neighbor is non, but you're just a new guy in the area. I think the tables, I, I mean, I get why there's a table there, but it seems to tie your hands probably. It probably, you know, I guess if you're looking to restrict things, the table will be really useful. But if you're looking to be able to make, you know, have some flexible decision-making, I don't, I don't think it's that, I think it does more harm than good, you know, just.
One of the tools that probably hasn't been brought up is contract zoning.
What is contract zoning?
If, for instance, you wanted to allow me to build a residential facility in a C-2, okay? And you had the contract, and then that, that particular non-conforming use is allowed there for that purpose. So when that use is done, it's done, it goes back to what it was. It reverts back to commercial, as an example, or it was commercial residential, so on and so forth.
Well, isn't that similar to somebody wanting to put a beauty shop in their house? And it, it only applies to the applicant. It does not carry forward to the next person who buys that building.
That's a home occupation, though.
Right, but it's the same concept that, you know, you're given a variance which is limited to you and only you.
We have the likelihood to cover that particular situation, though, whereas in the past we didn't.
Okay.
Considered a home occupation and as long as you don't have any employees or anything like that, there's no, no zoning application in that.
Okay, but the contract use is a limited-
Contract, the contract is for that purpose and that purpose only.
Right, it doesn't, it doesn't carry forward with-
It does not carry forward. So in other words, if I, you allow me to put up a commercial entity in a residential area, when you look at the definition of a commercial entity, if I leave because I'm all done with the purchase that I have and I sell that, you want to put a filling station there? Oh, nobody wants that, so that's why it terminates at the time of the use.
It's kind of like that Mr. Trump.
They can be, they can be a pair, too. I think a lot of communities, even though some of them have, will apply that.
I think that's a little different. I think that was a little different.
Some flexibility.
Well, so we've discussed the desire to have some flexibility. I don't know if there are, and we've had several things pointed out to us, several paragraphs that potentially could be used to give us that flexibility. And I don't know, Austin, if, if there are others out there that are not already in here that, or do we want, I mean, just how much flexibility? You know, the table doesn't promote flexibility. It does provide guidance. I don't know, can we, can we legislate our own ordinance to give this body the flexibility to ignore the table?
No.
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 Just asking.
Whatever rules we have have to be publicly available. We can't say, oh, that's our little rule. No, that doesn't work.
Okay.
Could, could, could we come up with some, sort of like, and I probably wouldn't want to call it a variance because that would get confusing, but along the lines of a variance where you, where you, you know, I mean, I don't know what the different impacts you'd want to consider are.
I think if I'm understanding everything correctly, it would be more along the lines of a site design review or I, we would call it something different, a site usage review or something that would have to have planning board approval. I, I think that's kind of what, what you'd be looking for in that, in that regard.
Yeah.
Which I think certainly makes sense. We would want to be careful on how we utilize that. We would also want to be careful as to what types of usage were required for planning board approval. When people develop, they don't want to, you know, have to wait for a month or two months to get a planning board approval and public hearings and that type of thing. So there's just, needs to be certain things in there that are code enforcement approval, but that's the tough part of trying to be flexible, but like, growing in a smart and forward-looking manner.
Is, is the C-2 district on Main Street specifically, what used to be known as South Main Street? Is that an overlay? Is there an underlying residential district? There's an awful lot of houses on Main Street.
That's what happens when you change from a residential zone to a commercial zone. You make that non-conformity that Matt's talking about. But later on, you end with these issues.
Like, when I think about like where my, where my office is situated, there's like seven single-family homes in a row that are all non-conforming within a commercial district. And mine's now a conforming use, but if you took sign down, just like a single-family home. So like, I'm not going anywhere, so I don't need to worry about. But if I wanted to sell it, I can only sell it to somebody who's going to use it commercially, even though, I mean, you just, it, it's a single-family home. It's like, it's totally consistent with the character of the neighborhood it's in, but the neighborhood itself is non-conforming. And, and you, there's nothing, there's no way in the code to get around that or to permit that. You'd have to hope somebody's looking the other way, you know. But, and there's a few, a few different places in care, like, like the South Main Street would be kind of, kind of like that.
And I, I think areas like that would be, you know, an RC-2 type setup would be a good thing for there.
Right, so you have a dual-
Right, the dual usage.
Right, okay, so that may be something we want to give some serious consideration for.
Right, those areas that are what, like Matt just described, should, should all be, should be RC-2. You know, Sweden Street, South Main Street.
Yeah.
Well, we've been discussing philosophy here. Is there any particular wording that any of you read through and, oh. I, I have a question. If you look at the bottom of page twenty-four in what was sent out, number two, at the very bottom line, is labeled special protection overlay districts. And we talk about two special protection overlay districts. A, sand and gravel aquifer, and B, wellhead, wellhead protection. Okay? And then we go into C, D, E, F, G, which pertains to a bunch of other stuff that really, I don't, I question if it has anything to do with special protection overlay districts. I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, is industrial and maintenance operations? Or, or am I missing the boat on something here? Waste disposal, handling, septic sewers? Because I, from a, you know, from an organizational structure point of view, I thought, okay, special protection overlay districts, after we do A and B, should we then have a number three with C, D, E, F, G? You know, other issues or, or am I misinterpreting what special protection overlay districts is supposed to encompass?
Well, it looks, ooh, it goes on.
Yeah, we're kind of bouncing around with all kinds of other various subjects. And I'm thinking to myself, why is this under the heading of special protection overlay districts?
Well, because you can take, and you can overlay that every place that you want it to apply without changing the underlying zoning.
Okay, but is that the appropriate place to discuss stormwater runoff?
Exactly.
It is?
Yeah, and all the rest of it. So you can make sure that people who are in those overlay districts, probably in I-1, I-2, C-1, C-2, and probably some other places, are conforming to all these nice rules about waste disposal and chemical storage.
Petroleum handling. Petroleum handling and, okay, well.
Without having to write a special ordinance for gas stations and another one for sheet metal shops.
Even growing trees, silviculture.
Yeah, it took me a while to remember what that meant.
Oh, well, I had to Google it. I thought at first it was fish farming, because fish are silver.
That's aquaculture, sir. Yeah, these, I think, it's my own opinion, but I think these are used for, just to make sure that.
Oh, my.
Got our spaces covered.
I'm not saying to take those all out, I just questioned them being, you know, structurally organized. Pardon?
Other numbered.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't view those other topics to be part of special overlay districts.
Except that that's exactly what they are, for the purpose of making sure that they get applied everywhere.
Do you concur with that, Mr. City Manager?
That certainly makes sense.
See, it says here right here, Phil.
However, I'm beginning to wonder if there was a formatting issue when that got copied and pasted into the council, sorry, in the planning board packet. Because the stormwater runoff and the ordinance is all under the wellhead protection.
As it is here.
Well, so, well, wait a minute.
No, because.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
No, it should be, yeah, the stormwater runoff, instead of item C, should be small letter.
So it should be H, under wellhead protection. And then the rest of what follows, industrial maintenance operations would be I, septic sewage disposal would be J, waste handling, K.
Okay, but you're basically leaving them there, though.
They would all.
So they do fall under the broad category of overlay, special protection overlay districts?
Those would all fall under the wellhead protection overlay district, not necessarily the sand and gravel aquifer overlay district.
I don't know, I disagree with you. The wellhead is specific to where the wellhead is.
Correct.
Right.
Or within a 500 or 1,000 foot radius of the well.
Yeah, and items C through silviculture, whatever letter that is.
Okay.
I think are used, if used properly, to apply as an overlay to just about any other district you could think of. And I take that wording from what's just above, sand and gravel, which is, the overlay districts shall be superimposed over underlying districts and land uses that are subject to both the standards in the underlying and the overlay districts. In other words, this is a way to group this kind of standard in one place and make it apply to many different zoning categories.
I don't disagree with that, that would be a, one way to do it moving forward, but currently, that's not how it is. It looks to me like it was, when this got copied and pasted for the county, for the planning board packet, that it got shifted over into, look, appearing as if it's separate districts, but in the current ordinance, it does not, it's not separate overlay districts.
Is that something you can look into?
I have it right here in the current ordinance.
Oh, you have it.
We have it too.
So I'm looking at both.
Oh, oh, so it's just incorrect in the handout?
Right, in the packet, the way it appears to me.
Okay, okay. Well, other than that, okay, I don't think there was any, I mean, in my reading, other than having to look up silviculture, I really didn't see anything else that caught my eye with the terminology.
I don't see where that is in.
773, 772, 773.
Okay, we'll look at it and see what happened. Oh, you're saying the word processor changed the headings?
Right.
Oh, I see.
And like I said, I think you can make arguments that each of those could be a special overlay district and potentially.
Yeah, well, the way that was just serendipitous, the way it got changed, then it looked that way.
Right.
Well, what, also the fact that the opening paragraph says for purposes of this ordinance, Caribou has two special protection overlay districts.
Yeah.
You know, sand and gravel, and then the wellhead, okay? And so you read about those two. I can see where everything after the wellhead is supposed to come in under the wellhead, as opposed to, I guess the two is what kind of puzzled me.
Yeah, well, that's what happened when they did the copy and paste.
Yep, yep.
The word processor changed the.
The lettering.
Changed the headings.
Yep, okay. Does anybody have any language concerns about chapter 13?
Well, are we all done discussing single-family dwellings in C-1 and C-2? Are we going to let that stand the way it is? Just planning board approval?
No, we don't. I thought we were going to get more information on it, right?
That's, well, I was under the impression.
I missed that comment. More information on.
The verbiage of dwelling, single-family.
From whom?
I'll reach out for sample ordinances.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's fine. I just didn't want to, I didn't want to have a, reach a consensus that we're all done talking about that. Okay, all right.
Is that in response to Matt's request for definition?
Right, and just to make sure that we're having full knowledge of what we're doing with.
We can put that definition within the ordinance as well, so that'll take out that question thereof, too.
So what action are you looking for on this chapter 13 rewrite?
No action really tonight. I'll bring back some definition examples from other communities for the zones, definitions for the single-family, multifamily, that type of thing. But I have a feeling that we'll be coming back to this section two or three or four more times before we finish the whole chapter 13 rewrite.
Okay, so for next meeting, we'll look at that. Should we delve into what follows this?
300.
I'll look to the board for guidance on that. If we want to just focus on this chapter again, I think there's still plenty to talk about.
I think we need to nail down one before we move on.
Exactly.
When do we get to play with the map?
Oh, you and your. Once we get everything defined, I think would be the best time.
We'll get you some Legos in the meantime.
With that.
And what we can do, and I'll have to play with this a little bit, but we can hook up the projector with Google Earth and actually change the zoning map as we go.
Yep.
Cool.
You can see the properties, it'll take a little bit of work, but I think we can.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea to get a much firmer handle on chapter 200 before we move on to the others, because the others are going to be driven by this anyway.
Right.
So we'll bring back more definitions and.
Okay.
The, I think once we get the definitions hammered out a little bit more, that will start to be where we can play with, what do we want where, what do we want to add for mixed-use zones, that type of thing. So I'll bring examples of mixed-use ones as well.
I don't recall, well, is there, trying to remember, if, is there a definition of mixed-use or the RC zones? Is RC, was RC zone in this? I read this several weeks ago. Because if we don't have RC in here, then we should.
RC-2, it's on page 34 of the packet. Any commercial use allowed in the C-1 and C-2 districts shall be allowed in the RC-2 district.
Okay. Good. Okay, nothing else on this item? Any new business?
Has anybody heard from Jim? Where are we at with?
I had the same question too, because I believe this is his third or fourth.
It's his third, and I know he hasn't been to one this year.
I would need to look up the ordinance and see what that states as to attendance.
Yeah. Just a cup is enough.
Like, I can look.
And I don't recall whether he was at, did we have one in December?
I don't think he was. Been a while.
A vacancy may be declared by the voting members of the board upon the resignation or death of a member, or when a member ceases to be a voting resident of the city, or when a member fails to attend three consecutive meetings, or fails to attend at least 75% of all meetings during the preceding 12-month period.
Has he been in contact with anybody?
You said.
Yeah.
I seen, I had, I had some training at Caribou Fire last Tuesday, which he was at, but.
You didn't talk about planning board.
I didn't talk about planning board, no.
When you saw him last week or whenever, was planning board discussed?
A little bit, I.
You expected him here tonight.
I mean, maybe, maybe if Austin could send a letter, just to see if his.
Can you contact him and ask him what?
And then just let him know, you know, that if we don't have anything by, let's say, next month, that, you know, maybe we'll look for.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Reach out to him and if we can put something on the agenda for next month to discuss it again.
Okay. Any other new business? Update from the manager?
Just what's listed in the packet, the nuisance property ordinance was adopted. Nobody from the public showed up that night. Independent living project is not quite ready to move forward. They're no longer, they couldn't come to an agreement with the hospital district online.
Okay.
They're looking at a few other pieces of property in the community.
In Caribou.
In Caribou, yeah.
I thought they were moving a little precipitously.
Okay, that's it? Motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second.
All in favor? Making adjourn.